Okay. Hold on. Hold on a second. Let me go back in. Okay. All right, so here are our topics for today. We have dosage, pharmacology, immune response and inflammation, nervous system, musculoskeletal, more farm. All right, so Amy, you get to go first. What category and how much money?
Oh, God. I will take, Jesus. I'll take dosage for 100. I'm scared.
Okay. All right. The doctor orders 750 micrograms to be given IM stat. You have one milligram per ml. This is the correct dosage in ml. So what would the answer be?
Do we need to answer this like Real Jeopardy?
Yes, girlfriend, it's Jeopardy. Because dosage is going to be, you're going to have several dosage questions. These are easy points if you get them right, so.
All right, so what is 0.8 milligrams?
Yay, Amy won.
Oh, wait. I said milligrams. It was supposed to be milliliters.
MLs, it's MLs.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I was looking at, I, that's my fault, so I didn't win.
I just looked at the 0.8. So I don't even watch Jeopardy. How does Jeopardy work? Do they just go back and forth to each person or is the same person as they keep when answering the questions, right?
Well, usually people have buzzers and they can ring in, but since we can't do that, you have to pick people.
Oh, okay.
And that's it. That's the question. You have to answer it in the what is.
Okey dokey.
That's the answer to the question. That's why I asked if it was like Real Jeopardy.
Yay, okay. All right, Cindy, you are next. Beside your category and your dollar amount.
I guess I do the, the next dosage, the doses for 200.
Okey dokey. A child weighs 20 pounds, 12 ounces. The doctor orders a medication 20 milligrams per kilogram per day. What is the correct dosage? I don't know how to stop the timer.
Oh, it is, oh, you ready?
Yes.
What is 188.54 MJ?
It won't stop. There we go. That was scary. Okay, what, what'd you say the answer was?
What is 188.64 MJ?
Is that your final answer?
Yeah. This should be right, 125 about 16. That's funny. If I had to. That's not right? Oh, yeah, that was right. I'm staying here doing it again. I was like, I had 188.636 and you suppose around it to the 100 to make 8.64. So I was right.
Yes, good job. All right, Basola, you're next. Alex Trebek is probably turning over in his grave like, what in God's name is this girl doing?
Doing dosage for 300.
Wow, look at you guys, all the dosage, okay. Doctor orders heparin 1600 units per hour. The concentration is 25,000 units and 500 ml. What will you set the pump up at?
32, 32 ml.
Let's see. Very good. 32 ml per hour. If you just put ml, it's going to be wrong. It has to be ml per hour, okay? Because if you just put 32 ml, 32 ml, what, per minute? Per hour, per five hours, you have to put hour, okay? Good job.
That's usually where the daily double, so she should get up with the point.
That's usually where, oh, so we have a, an expert here at Jeopardy. Okay, she can have double the points. All right, Heather, you're next.
Um, let me have immune inflammation for 100, please.
Influenza immunizations are administered to patients over 65. How frequently?
Uh, what is yearly? Annually?
Let's see. Yes, yearly, very good. All right. Sophia.
I'll do pharmacology 400.
Substances move freely in and out of a cell by diffusion.
That's the question.
That's the answer. So remember, we talked about in the very beginning, we talked about substances that can go in and out of that, in and out of our cells, some actively, some by diffusion. It's okay if you don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, let's see what it is. Electrolytes. Yep. Okay. Raven. Raven, what category do you want?
Um, I'll do nervous for 100.
Physiological response from a drug that stimulates the parasympathetic nervous system.
Honestly, don't know.
Okay, that's okay.
Would it be?
Yep, so increased gastrointestinal motility. Let's go back. So increased GI motility is a physiological response from a drug that stimulates the parasympathetic nervous system. All right, how about Kelsey Fitzpatrick?
Um, I guess I'll do more farm for 100.
Oh, there, okay. Well, hold on. And we're not going to do that one because we couldn't teach you guys that. I think Amy made some changes to hers. Let's do this one.
Oh, I meant like the actual category where it says more farm.
Oh, more farm, okay. Sorry.
It's okay.
Adverse effects of halperidol or haladol.
I don't know. I don't remember.
Okay. Extra parametal effects. So do you remember we, we talked about those? You guys should know what extra parametal effects are, which ones they are and how they present in patients, okay? Love line. Love line, what category do you want? Okay, Ashley, how about you?
Oh, my gosh, I didn't know that.
Are you there? Oh, okay. Which one, which category do you want?
You mean, you mean inflammation 300.
Normal signs and symptoms after a vaccine administration.
Uh, fever. Fever.
Let's see. Fever is not normal. Can it, it could, not necessarily normal. Very common normal side effects would be pain, redness, and swelling at that site of injection. Okay. That's okay. Um, Brianna, no, Ashley, Ashley Wilkinson.
I guess I'll do the nervous for 500.
Reasons barbiturates are not the main treatment of anxiety anymore.
Um, because what is the, they have too many adverse side effects.
Let's see. So they, their side effects are more severe. There's an increased risk of physical tolerance, an increased risk of psychological dependence, and a hypersensitivity reactions can sometimes be fatal. So you guys should be writing this down. Do you have access to this or were you able to pull up this jeopardy from the blackboard?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So you have access to this thing. You don't have to write it down. Okay. Brianna.
Do you access this?
Are you there, Brianna? Okay, Ryan.
Oh, do you know? Let's go to 300.
Okay, what are the imbalance neurotransmitters in Parkinson's disease?
Um, is acetylcholine?
Acetylcholine, yeah, and there's one more.
Uh, Parkinson's. Um.
I'm going to steal it.
See, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, I guess, okay, who said, who, who thinks they know it?
Me.
Okay, Amy.
It's a dopamine.
Let's see. Yes. Dopamine and acetylcholine. Good. All right. Brianna, did Brianna come back yet? I can't see everybody. All right, Martha Lynn.
Yeah. Uh, hmm. Immune, immune inflammation. I'll go the least.
Okay.
200.
Symptoms that a patient would exhibit and that would require you to hold vaccine administration.
If they have fe, if they have fever.
Okay.
I'm up.
Yes, a runny nose, a fever of 102.4, okay? 102.4 and coughing. Good job. Um, Kathy.
Yes. Um, I have not a clue. Probably I'm getting it wrong. Immune inflammation for 400.
I will sit it. Hold on, that's not right. Normal signs and symptoms, wait a minute. For 400, you said?
Yes.
Adverse effect when an NSAID is given with a diuretic.
Oh. An adverse effect. I have no idea. Can I guess?
Sure.
Uh, stomach upset.
It decreases the diuretic effect. So if you're giving somebody Tylenol and Lasix together, it's gonna, the Tylenol is go, or that Motrin, you're giving someone Motrin and, and a diuretic, it's going to decrease the effectiveness of the diuretic.
All right. So does that mean that they wouldn't, like, they wouldn't urinate like a full amount or would they just like not have urination at all or like decrease urine?
So that's going to depend on how much fluid they have on them to begin with. You still might see a lot of output. You might see a little depending on how much they have to actually pull off the patient.
Okay, so would another effect be that they would have like bloodstream urine? No.
No, nope, it wouldn't cause that. No, it would just diminish the, it wouldn't be as effective.
Okay.
All right, let's see. Did Brianna? Yes.
Ms. David, can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Their question for, uh, for Ryan, that the answer was dopamine and acetylcholine. I didn't get a question. I couldn't remember the question.
Was the cause, what? Let's see, what was the question?
What neurotransmitters are affected with Parkinson's?
Okay. Okay. All right, Tazra.
Thanks. Thank you.
Um, hmm. I guess doses 500. I don't know this other stuff yet.
At 1630 hours, your patient received a medication which is ordered to be given every 12 hours. What time will the next dose be given?
At 04:30?
Yep, I'm pretty sure, yeah. Okay, Shannawa.
Um, I have no clue, so I'll just go musculoskeletal 400.
Priority assessments when giving an opioid to a client.
Uh, I guess pulse and blood pressure, pulse blood pressure and respiration.
Yes, respiratory rate, well, respiratory rate and level of consciousness. So those are going to be your priorities. We always look at blood pressure and heart rate, respirations. But you also want to look at their level of consciousness, obviously. If they're barely awake and they can't have a conversation with you, do you want to give them something that you know is going to sedate them even further?
No, but I have a question about this. So if the, if, if this question were on the exam and they said, would it say respiratory rate and level of consciousness or would it just say one?
No, it's going to say both. It would say both.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. All right, Deana.
Can I get musculoskeletal 200?
Priority nursing actions after administering narcotics to a client. So think about, you know, we do wipe in the lab and slow. What does slow mean?
Um, signaling device within reach. Bed, oh, so don't say W because you just said wipe.
Well, no, no, I was just saying, we do wipe and slow in lab. Those are the times we talk about this. So this is,
Okay.
Yep, so think about slow.
I got it. I got it. So signaling device within reach, bed low and locked and you wash your hands, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yep, that's what slow means. So you just want to make sure if you give bed locked and locked.
I didn't say anything about the rails.
That's okay.
The rails, though.
Yeah, that's okay. We were just, I just wanted you to think about the actual bed being in the lowest position. So if you give someone who has, who's going to be on a narcotic, you, you know, they might be out of it a little bit. So you want to keep those side rails up so they don't fall out of bed and make sure that the bed is in its lowest position. Very good. All right, Dushana. No. Renee.
Um, I'm driving, so sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's fine. Oh, no, that's okay. That's fine.
Okay, so I can't see anything because I'm driving, I'm on the Beltway.
No, that's fine. Never mind. No, that's fine. Never mind.
Okay. Professor Davis, I missed one. I missed one. You want me to, want to circle back to me?
Brianna?
Yeah.
Yes, what category do you want?
Uh, can I have more farm 200?
Sure. Hypotension.
So hypotension, what is low blood pressure?
Yes. Um,
Is that?
Well, so, I think it's in here the wrong way. So an adverse effect of Xanaflex, right, or tazanidine. Remember, I told you guys you need to know about Xanaflex? So an adverse reaction of tazanidine or Xanaflex is hypotension. Okay. Very good. All right. Renee.
Um, can I do dosage for 400?
0.450 micrograms equals how many milligrams?
Okay, hold on, sorry, let me, my calculator. Um, 0.00045 milligrams.
There you go. Very good. All right, Maureen. No, Maureen.
Oh, no, I'm here. Pharmacology for 400.
A potential fatal adverse effect of anti-infectives.
Uh, is it anaphylaxis? Uh, anaphylaxis, oh. Forget how to pronounce anaphylaxis.
Yep, anaphylaxis, very good. All right. Sabria.
More farm for 300.
Adverse effect of an anticholinergic medication.
Um, tachycardia.
Very good. Yay. All right, Monica.
Pharmacology for 500.
Hmm, I don't like some of these, the way they're set up. Um, I don't like that one. Let me flip it. What is the goal of anti-infectives? So, okay, let me do another one because that wasn't a good one. Plus, that was on the last test. Sometimes, um, pick another one.
Nervous for 200.
Okay, so it looks like what is going to cause an increase in blood pressure, bronchodilation, and decreased bowel sounds. Um, this would be one of our response systems in our body. One of them increases everything, one of them decreases everything.
Parasympathetic nervous system or response.
Yes, very good. So, all right. Alan.
More, 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 500.
Okay, so when we give this medication, we need to teach our patients that if they stop taking it, they can't just stop taking it, that it needs to be withdrawn gradually. This was a particular medication that we talked about to help people sleep.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good, Ambien. All right, Verlina.
Yes, um, more farms 400.
A drug that produces analgesic and antitussive effects.
Cody.
Yay, very good. And Kelsey Ziegler, so um, I know you can't see, your screen went black. Do you want to do nervous system for 300? Maybe she's not there anymore. Okay, let's start at the top again. Amy.
Um, just pick one.
Nervous system for 300.
Okay.
Symptoms of withdrawal from benzodiazepines. What would we see?
I had this in my notes because I was going over the I had this in my notes because I was going over this today.
I can help you.
Go ahead, still maculine, still maculine.
No maculine, no. Let me try, Amy.
Amy, do you know the answer? Take a guess. Did we lose Amy?
She's saying she's frozen. Is she saying frozen? Are you frozen? Okay, she said she's frozen. Good. She said, go ahead.
What do you think, Maureen?
I think coma, shock, something like that.
What is it?
Coma or shock. Is that that?
No, not coma or shock. Who else knows?
Uh-oh.
Headaches, nightmares, and malaise.
Yes, headaches, nightmares, and malaise. Very good.
What is malaise? What is exactly malaise?
Like body aches, tired, body aches.
Okay.
Flu like, right?
Yep.
Flu less into.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Cindy.
Let me see. How about, what is that? Muscular, muscular skeletal. Muscular skeletal 400.
Deficiencies in our bodies that can result in depression.
Okay, so is that the one they deal with? I think it's like, is it serotonin? Serotonin affects the mood. I think it's a couple. I want to say serotonin or dopamine, one of those.
Okay, it is a couple. Dopamine is one. Anybody else know?
Yeah, only no dopamine.
Serotonin. Serotonin.
Let's see.
Serotonin, dopamine, and noradrenaline.
The no record, oh, that's what I forgot.
Yep, all three of those. Let me do Brianna again because she kind of got a yucky question. Brianna, you want to go again?
No, I don't want to mess up the order.
Oh, okay. Vesola.
Yeah, I can do, um, nervous 400.
A priority action for a client who is starting an SSRI. So when we put patients on SSRIs for depression, what is one of the big side effects? What are they at risk for?
Suicide.
Say it again. I couldn't hear what you said.
Suicide.
Yes. Yep, so we would want to implement suicide precautions on our patient because we know that they're at a higher risk for potentially committing suicide when we start them on this treatment. Very good. All right, Heather. You're.
Sorry, I thought I hit unmute. Immune inflammation for 500.
Important patient teaching about acetaminophen administration and toxicity.
Um, um, uh, risk of overdose if you take other medications that have acetaminophen.
Okay. So we want to check, we want to tell the patient to make sure that they check the label on those over-the-counter medications to watch for inclusions of acetaminophen. Very good. All right, and the last one, Sophia. Oh, we have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, musculoskeletal 500. Oh. All right, assessments.
Daily double.
Assessments when client is prescribed a TCA. Those are the tricyclic. What do you think? The tricyclic antidepressants.
Well, suicide attempt is one of them because I think that's for like majority with the depression. She won't monitor.
Okay, suicide attempts, GI obstruction, and the client affect. So these also cause GI issues. So you would want to monitor those, and then the patient's affect. So what does their affect mean? That's their face, the way they look. So you would say if some, if you go into your patient's room and they're just sitting there and they don't really make eye contact with you, or you can't get any type of facial expression from them, we call that a flat affect. So you would want to look at your patient's affect to see how they are when they interact with you. So suicide attempts, GI obstruction, and client affect. All right, we have one more. Final Jeopardy. For Raven, you're next. Are you ready, Raven?
Yes.
Oh, ha, this is my favorite subject in nursing school so far.
Oh, it's asking what mine is. Um, I guess I like fundamentals.
It's a trick question.
It's a trick question. What class are we in now? Pharmacology. What is pharmacology? Oh, God, all right, guys. You did good. Did you guys like playing that game?